Of these 11 sections. The first being the ask around the reorganization of parts of the administrative offices, particularly the Safety Service Director, the Executive Assistant to the Mayor, and this Administrative Assistant position that would be a part-time. I heard from four of the council members at that original January 1st meeting that that was something that they'd be more likely to talk about in committee in particular because it was something that people felt was something they could swallow a lot easier, and we'll talk about that. And then we'll move on to the other elements of the administrative offices and the other offices' positions that were listed in the ordinance. So really for you three, this, to say it again, this would be the range increase for the Safety Service Director, the filling of the Executive Assistant to the Mayor, which would increase that range to max 66,000, and then the addition of the Administrative Assistant would be a part-time position. All right, so I kind of welcome the discussion on that point first. Not all at once, guys.
I'll kick it off. I really like this. I think it's definitely something that I feel like we can handle right now. I think the Safety Service Director position has need to be looked at for the salary range for a while, just to get a nice quality individual to apply or to take that job. I personally know of somebody that was interested, and that's been one of the major turn-offs there of how big of a pay cut it is and just how non-competitive it is as far as pay. The Executive Assistant position, Administrative Assistant position, I think is going to be key for the mayor to start working and getting stuff done, looking at some of the grants we're going to need going forward, and just to kind of get those kinds of things rolling. And with those three positions, I really like that part of your package, what you're offering or what you're saying, and that gives us more time to kind of look at everything else, I feel like.
I know Vic's here. For the Administrative Assistant, it was my understanding that that was going to serve as kind of a boots-on-the-ground for community groups, being a bit of a face to the office outside of working hours. Is that kind of the vision, or could you kind of go over that particular job description?
Yeah.
It sounded attractive, but...
Thank you. The reason why this was put on at that organizational meeting is that I'm trying to put the structure together for the administration to be efficient and to actually get the work of the city completed. To do that, I have to hire a Safety Service Director that's qualified and actually can start on day one making some real efforts towards getting the city on track. So the Safety Service Director position is a very important position to me, and I wanted to try to get that salary adjusted to a level that's relatively, you know, competitive. Even at the structure, the adjustment that I'm asking, this is well below what the standard is. I mean, if you look at an administrator in the Hamilton County area, they're making quite a bit more than the base rate that I'm asking for here. So still going to be tough to get a good, high-quality person in here, but I think we can do it at these rates. I don't think it was a big ask. That person is the daily operations manager of the city, so he is the police chief's boss. He is the fire chief's boss. He is the superintendent of public works' boss. He's got a lot of responsibilities, so that's a big, big job. The other position, and this is a position that I asked for, is the Executive Assistant to the Mayor. And the Executive Assistant person is the person you continue to talk about as the Administrative Assistant. It's a little bit different. An Executive Assistant to the Mayor actually can go to meetings and would be a person that would bring things back to the Mayor and would bring things back to the Safety Service Director and be sort of the right-hand person to the Mayor, which is a part-time elected official for the city. But this person would also be involved with, there were a couple of things that came up just in the last few days, a couple of different projects that people came up and said, "Well, you should be working on this," or "You should be working on that." The Executive Assistant to the Mayor would be bringing resources, pulling them together, putting together executive summaries for not only the Mayor but for also council members. So as you're making decisions, you've got a packet of information, much like we did with the Administration Staffing Plan, you have a packet of information so that you can make good decisions as a council member. So those are the two positions that are really important within the Mayor's office. The way I was looking at funding the Executive Assistant is, right now, we have a community center director. That position is not filled. It was a position that the city had for years, and I was saying, "Well, if we don't fill that position and we put this Executive Assistant on, it's a better use of time and resources." Then what I'm looking, what I did was, we are eliminating the Mayor's secretary position. So that has been one person that has sat in the office, and that person has been a secretary to the Mayor and Safety Service Director. We're eliminating that position and putting two part-time administrative assistants in there. So these people are part-time. They're not receiving the full-time benefits. They're working, you know, less than 36, or less than, yeah, less than 36 hours. They are part-time people and don't have the ability to pick up the benefits and all that. So we have a considerable amount of cost savings in there. So, you know, running the numbers for the Mayor's office and actually doing that, that's sort of the structure that we were looking for.
Have you interviewed for any of those three? I know it's a net increase of 70,000, so we're just trying to see, have you, what kind of people have you seen that you...
Well, I put a job, I put a posting out for the Safety Service Director, right after the election was over, and, you know, at the current pay rate, you know, at the starting range, I really didn't get any. I got some qualified people, and I got some people that can do it, but I also had people that put in for the position, and I posted it, you know, a couple of different places that had no qualifications whatsoever, but they thought they could do the job. So my goal is to get more qualified candidates and put together a search committee, a team of people that would actually interview the Safety Service Director candidates and then would make a recommendation to me on which would be the right person. So it'll be a process. I did not expect to have a Safety Service Director in place on day one. When I looked at this and when I started looking at those things, it's like, there's no way I can make that happen. That's why we have the interim Safety Service Director in, who is John Murphy, who was the former police chief here, and he'll do a good job, and he'll be on that search committee. But putting the right person in, and there's job description, if you guys need a copy of the job description, I have that job description, and it's pretty elaborate. The responsibilities of the Safety Service Director are large. There's a lot of legal responsibilities that that person carries also.
Can I comment on something you said? You mentioned a net increase of 70,000? That's not correct because it may be based on the salaries for that key, but you're also not including substantial savings to the tune of about $25,000 to $26,000 by splitting the secretary into two positions of administrative assistants because they will not get health insurance where currently they are. Also, he's talking about essentially utilizing funds that had been funded in another key or would have been funded under the community center to move to that area.
Were those funds currently appropriated for the Director? Or was it just an authorized position but not funded?
It was an authorized unfunded position under the current plan because nobody was in that position, but, so it was not funded, but it was created. And again, that's one of the things for people at home or people in the audience, what we're talking about here is creating positions but not funding positions. So we want to say, these are the ideal positions we'd like to have in the city. These are their salary ranges. Here is the job description for these positions. However, that money's not being appropriated to hire all of the people on this list. This is just creating that salary range for those positions. Many of these positions existed prior to this and still remained unhired, unfilled, and unfunded for several years. So like the community center director, that was a position that had a job description and had a salary range, but nobody was actually hired to do that job, and the money was not funded for that position.
Thanks for that.
No, they're just doing...
Why they did it? Were there any other comments for that?
Yeah. So overall, I guess, do you have a draft of what you're proposing, the slimmed-down version of what you're proposing? It's okay if you don't, I just want to make sure I'm not missing.
I don't, but what I kind of did for myself, and I think it'd be good, the end result of this meeting is kind of creating just that. What is this going to write? And if you looked at what we looked, what we saw on December, or January 1st, it would be the first two positions up here and then the Safety Service Director. That's what we're talking, those are only the three people we're talking about in this section. Then there'll be a second section, which we'll talk about, a second and a third.
Yep, so thank you so much. I'll limit my comments to that. So, yeah, I definitely, as I expressed at the organizational meeting, I very much would be supportive of that slimmed-down version of this. You know, I originally had some concerns with the Mayor's secretary position being eliminated and then the Executive Assistant position being created because of just the pay discrepancy, but the Mayor's kind of alluded to just the different job descriptions on that, so makes sense there to me. You know, I would just, I guess, encourage the city administration to, you know, I don't know if we, I would not always look to have to eliminate another position in order to create one because I think there's been, for years, I think we've just had understaffed the administrative side of the city. So I would say that just, I'm glad that, you know, that that's able to kind of work out, but it's in the future. If there's positions that need to be created, HR Director or some other type of position, then, you know, sometimes we're just going to have to spend more money to make it happen, you know, and that would have to come with changing the plan, of course, and I'm sure you'll talk about that later, but just kind of comments there. But yeah, I'm supportive of that slimmed-down version.
You too? I just wanted to make, before I answer that, something I was hoping to get out of this is, when I go through these three sections, I kind of want to get a sense of the four of us wanting to know exactly what we're going to bring to council. So saying I'd be supportive of something like that is exactly, or I wouldn't, that's kind of what I'm trying to get from us on each of these sections.
So I don't have any issues with what's been said. It's just going to work. So basically, what I got in front of me is the ordinance that the administration brought towards us. Then we have the second ordinance, and what you are, what we are proposing today is to eliminate, eliminate the rest, and we're keeping the Executive to the Mayor, and we're breaking that into two positions, and then the Safety Service Director salary range, include that, and bump the rest. That makes sense, absolutely.
I agree. Yeah, I agree. I think it's a very, very, very good idea. I think it's going to be cost-effective for us. I think it helps the administration to kind of get the things done that they want to get done while we kind of look at the rest.
So I didn't want to stop it because I wanted to get that out, so thanks. The other element was, it's not necessarily that I want to bump that out, I just wanted to, we might bump that out. The other, the reason I wanted to make that very clear is because there's a number of other elements under the, it's in this original ordinance, actually, that was presented on like the 22nd, I think it was. And this is all the ask that was brought by Vic early in the middle of December for that particular office, the true administration. And I wanted to go line by line here. I know it's, there's a lot of people here, but I think it's going to be worth just touching on each one and seeing if we're either on board, if it makes sense, or if we need more clarification on what the position is, or if that job description has changed to warrant a different type of person in there. Second thing, our reason I want to go line by line is because I'd like to understand, is this position already filled? Because, and I think where we're looking at, you know, watching our pennies here, this might not be the best time to increase a band for every position if they've already accepted the job, and then maybe we can see if that, three months from now when we're making the plan, that fits, or it doesn't. I think today, we don't want to say, in my opinion, yes across the board. That's just too much of a burden too quick, especially if that position's already been filled and they accepted it, so they're quite happy working today. So I'd like to go line by line, and then please stop and just kind of give comment and then ask questions where we can. So clerk of council, increasing to that higher band. In my mind, they've already, again, they've already accepted it. It doesn't really feel like we need to go to the higher band considering they're already above the former lower band anyway. So nothing would really have to change with their current pay. They'd still be within both former band and current band, so there's no really reason to expand it right now, in my opinion. You guys?
Could you just repeat that last part again? I'm kind of confused.
The current pay is already within this expanded band, so there's no reason to increase it.
For which position again?
For the clerk of council.
Okay. So the expanded band is 10,450 to 14,300. What is the current payment of the current?
It's already about that.
Well, that was the, the prior clerk of council was 11,446,24 was the projected salary for 2019 in the fiscal emergency plan for that position. These other salaries that are showing here are if you use the new range. That's what this sheet shows.
Yep.
If you use the new range and then hire them all with the 10% leeway, that's where it puts them.
Okay, I understand. So they're saying, take the bottom range, add a 10% V, and then that's what gets you your...
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
So do we know what the current clerk of council is being paid starting?
The previous one or the one that just got appointed?
I got the previous one, but the one that just got appointed.
Presumably at the 11,000, right? Because they just got appointed.
Whatever was on their appointment level as determined by council.
I mean, I don't think council approved an appointment letter. So like the range on the current ordinance from 2009 is 9,500 to 13,000. So I guess potentially if the current position is filled at 9,500 or anything under the current proposed 10,450, then it would bump her pay, the person's pay up if we were to pass the new one. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Council has to make the determination as to how much they're paying that individual as you are the appointing authority.
Right. So again, but yeah, I don't think we have the information on what the appointment letter says for, and so, I mean, so I'm not saying that you shouldn't have that, I'm just saying I don't think we have that here.
I don't think we've been given it yet.
Okay.
So to, as background to this, understand he's referring to an ordinance from 2009. When I took office, there was a previous ordinance that established pay ranges for all of these positions, and then it tied the upper and lower aspect of that range to a cost of living adjustment that happened annually so that we didn't have to come back every two or three years and adjust the salary ranges to be even at the low end of being competitive. What we found is by looking at those, that range was actually starting to go above the rate of pay of the people who were in the lower, lower part of that. So they created a new ordinance in 2009, setting pay ranges for all of these individuals. The ranges were established by researching the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics Midwest, so the area of Ohio, for government clerical positions for each one of these positions. And then at that time, Finance Committee took that range and lowered it beyond the average, and the statement was made at that time, "No one should get rich working for the city," which I didn't agree with because I thought you should pay a fair rate. Well, that was 2009, and the decision was made at that time that there wasn't going to be any kind of adjustment to the range. If you hire somebody new in your office, you're hiring them at that rate for 2009. And that rate never was adjusted and never went up, and now we're here 11 years later, and we're expected to hire people at rates that were low 11 years ago. So we have to establish a pay range that is fair for hiring people that do professional jobs in the city. And so we're not talking about giving people raises. We're talking about being able to create a range of salaries to offer for workers for the city in these appointed positions that are fair and equitable to the individuals we're hiring and to the taxpayer. But to expect to keep people at that range because they signed on, I think is really unfair because it's 11 years old, and it was low at that time.
Jim, when council removed that provision in 2009, how do pay raises operate within the ranges? So in the, I know we talked, you talked about those percentages, and I think pre-2009, they were some up to 5% every year. Can that still, how does it work in the new world, post-2009 version?
If I wanted to give an individual in my office a raise, I would have to bring that to council and request a salary increase.
Is that the appointment letter you're talking about?
No, the appointment letter is what they start at. It says, "This person's hired on this date for this specific position, and this is their starting pay rate." Then we use this ordinance to look and see, are they within the legal range that was established by council? If in the past, and, you know, Mr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong here, if in the past you wanted to hire someone at a rate different than the low end of that rate, of that range, you had to come to council and say, "I want to hire this guy. I want to hire this person. Here is their resume. They're going to be great, but I think they need 10 or 15% higher than the low end of the range." And then if I decided I wanted to give that person a raise during that time?
Right.
They've done a great job. You know, you've saved the city money, you've done fantastic, no matter which department you're in. I, as a department head, would have to come to council and request for that individual a raise. Usually, when it was done in the past, I believe it's only been once since I've been in office, it was, "We are giving all appointed officials a 2% raise across the board," and not based on individual merit. And I think that happened one time, and I believe it was before the 2009 ordinance.
Jim, there were two ordinances in 2009. One was 2% raise for 2009. I don't remember if it was before or after the blanket orders passed. There was another one later in the year that granted a 3% in 2010.
Okay.
And that's the last time any of the appointed positions got any recent hire.
Then wouldn't it make sense for those offices, the heads of those offices, to come back on, I don't know, as early as the 14th, and request those pay raises where they saw fit or merit-based at that point?
If there's individuals in my office that I wanted to make that claim to give raises to, I would time that with the time that we were presenting the new fiscal recovery plan, so that it would be part of the plan to give those increases to those individuals. That's the way I would approach it. But again, the majority of this ordinance that you are looking at is to set salary ranges for people who are not here as of December 31st of 2019.
I understand. Got it. So really, for the four of us, outside of one, two, three, the Executive Assistant, the Administrative Assistant, and the Safety Service Director, this is the list that would be the second section that we would bring to council. I think it'd be worth having our conversation and getting kind of the, are we for or against it, at least in our heads right now, with what we're going to bring forward on the 14th. So that's, these are the ranges that they're talking about, outside of the three we already discussed. Guys? Thanks.
See, the only thing that troubles me on this is what the total operating cost is going to be, the new increase in operating cost with extending these pay ranges, and that troubles me because we have a lot of capital improvements we have to do. I mean, we have to do them. We can't, it's not like we need to do them, we have to do them. I mean, we still got people flooding out in Ward 1 with the storm sewer issues. I mean, the state of our water towers is well-known. We still got some streets that we need to get done. Those are the things that I personally am worried about, more so than this, and I would like to see if we can get those things done and then come relook at this.
Who's going to do those jobs if you don't hire people to do it?
Well, we have the jobs. It's just the pay ranges are a little lower than what's here. And though I hear you when you're saying they were low then, I just, I really don't see where we can push this ahead before we look at what we have coming in and what these things are going to cost us, like the storm sewers, the water towers, the roads. I just, when we got people that are still flooding today, and it's been years since the big one of late, and we haven't been able to do it, when we do have a little money coming in, I just don't think that we need to let it burn a hole in our pocket, and we need to kind of sit with it, live with it, analyze it, and see where we can go forward from there. Because I really think that some of these capital improvements we have to do, they're a must, not a need, or not a desire to do them. We have to do them.
Would it help to have, just real quick, let me go down, which ones of these are currently unfilled? Because presumably, if they're unfilled, that's where, that those dollars aren't used by someone else. If they are filled, then we're talking about whatever the variance is between the low plus 10 on that appointment salary and what their current pay is, which I imagine is going to be a heck of a lot less than whatever filling a new position is. So are we able to go through and say which ones are not filled? Because that, when you made your comment, who's going to do them, that's probably that section of people.
Yeah. What, I think there's also some consideration to be made that there are some positions in here that are currently part-time, that if you let that person go, are you going to find somebody part-time to do that with the hope that maybe council will change its mind and make it full-time and give the citizens the service that they need? Because you're just trapping the same people, the same system, over and over again. If you give, and this is just a ballpark estimate, if all of these positions were hired at this new range, including the new positions, and you hire everybody day one, which was yesterday, right? You're talking $250,000 for the year for a city with a $24 million operating budget next year, maybe more. You're talking about 6% of our carryover...
That's incremental than right now. So 250...
More than now.
More than today.
If you hire all of these, if you take the ones that are part-time and you make them full-time, if you, if you take the new positions and hire them, if you take the positions that are existing that nobody is doing right now and you hire them, if you fully staff, now that does not include things like who takes health insurance, who takes the family plan versus the single plan. That's not calculated in.
That's really important because we said earlier, I said it was...
The basis of these...
Sorry, I didn't understand, but...
Yeah, and health insurance is a big concern, and, you know, we're still paying 100% of the health insurance for our employees, and for some people, that's $25,000 to $26,000 a year, you know? So that is part of this, but we're talking about the base salaries in the positions you need to run the city, and the positions that have been done with no one or with one person doing what two or three should be doing, or with one person doing part-time when it should be a part-time and a full-time person doing. And we're not talking about just people in City Hall. We're talking about people that are like out in the community doing these jobs too. Now, all of this being said, understand if you pass the ordinance that was put together, I think by Mr. Bonzel, the second ordinance, how it affects me and my office, one person gets a minimal salary bump out of the five of us. So I'm not arguing this from the standpoint of someone who is going to expand the role of my office or give raises to the people who work for me. I'm doing this as a person who's sitting here and looking at the things that need to be done for this city, and you talked about capital improvements, looking at all the capital improvements that were slated, that were budgeted, that were planned for last year that were not done, that need to be done in 20... Yeah, 2020, and '21 and '22, and expanding that capital improvements plan and buying the things that we need. But in order to do that, in order to have the, in order to be able to function as a city and have people looking for grants and have people going out and doing competitive bidding and have people looking into these projects and being project managers, four major things that we have to do, you need people. And you don't need people to be paid at the tops of the scale, but you need people that are going to come to work for the city for what we have. And, you know, being someone that's been a small department head, it's tough when you interview somebody and it's really, you know, a good person, and you go to them and you say, "Hey, I wish I could offer you more, but I'm operating off something from 2009." Sorry.
Can I, can I chime in?
Yeah.
Okay. Right now, when you talk about what positions are filled, for me as an incoming mayor, I'll tell you, the Safety Service Director is filled with an interim person, so that position is really not filled with a highly, with the qualified professional administrator that we need in that position. So the Safety Service Director is not filled. The Superintendent of Public Works position is not filled. There's an interim Superintendent of Public Works in that position. There's a listed position, the Community Development Director, which is an economic development director, community development director. We're the second-largest city in Hamilton County. We don't have a community development director. We do not, that's not filled. We do not have a community center director. We do not have a health commissioner. We've had an interim health commissioner for the last two and a half years. We need to fill that position. We do not have a building commissioner right now, and these are positions that are required by law... And, and these are positions that are required by law, by state law, to be filled. We need to have a chief building official working for the city of Norwood to keep our building department open. We have a person that is filling in, is filling in in that position as the interim building commissioner right now so that we can keep our building department open. But quite frankly, if it goes on too long, we won't be keeping that open. We won't be able to keep our superintendent of public works position, so our previously, our, and I know that council loved the previous safety service director because he did such a bang-up job and everybody loved him so much, but quite frankly, he left January 1st. And when he left, he took, he took the operator of record certification needed with him. That's a certification that he carried and he took that and he basically called the Ohio EPA or sent the papers in to say, take my name off of there. So you have to fill that position in three days. You have to give them the name of a new, of a new certified operator. Now luckily, we have a person at Public Works that said he would do that in the interim. So we sent in that paperwork. But the EPA was already breathing, the day, yesterday, the EPA was breathing down my neck to get that taken care of. So these are all positions that are not filled. I had hoped to get the salary stuff squared away so that quickly I could make changes and get people in place, qualified people in place. That's why I put together all, this whole staffing package. This is why I put together all of the, the job descriptions to help council understand from day one, these are important positions that need to be filled. And that's, that's one of the reasons why this is so critical. We keep on talking, we're getting stuck in the weeds with these other people that have been in the city and working for the city for a while. I'm not worried about them and I'm pretty sure that we will get that squared away in the next couple of months. What I'm worried about is getting a staff in place in the city to take care of those projects, to hit the ground running. And we're not doing that by not moving forward with some of this stuff pretty quickly, relatively quickly.
Yeah, I think the, the point I was trying to make with which of these are filled, which of these are not, which of these are net increases, like the, could it be a risk of full-time and adding the benefit package? We saw in the first point, when you corrected me and said, well, you're not considering the benefit package, that actually tipped the scale in the other direction. So it would be really great for that second section that we bring to the council on the 14th to have, I could sit with you and use an Excel sheet. We'll take each of these, and if we're not going to do them now, what I meant by that line-by-line is say, filled or not filled, yes or no, net increase or decrease, other benefits. And I want to be able to bring a very clear net add and net need to council. So it's not just dollars, it's also the, whatever the non-financial aspects of these things.
It's called a legal requirement.
Thanks. Yeah, but that's exactly right. I mean, we need to be able to say the dollars and the why for each of these. And so I would like to sit with you or whoever it is to fill out that spreadsheet because that's going to make the decision on the 14th a lot more easier for all the council, all seven of the council members to vote on.
Yeah, I sent you a copy of that, what, two days ago or yesterday, maybe yesterday?
You did.
Yeah, and if you look at that across and you go beyond the last salary mark, it shows Medicare contributions, it shows pension contributions.
Is that in the column that says change highlighted here?
Yeah. Uh, if you, that's a different spreadsheet. It's the first one that I sent you. But anyway, it exists, so you can, you can look across and then you'll see there's a total healthcare for each department. Sometimes it's broken down by individual. The pension contributions, healthcare, the Medicare and the workers' comp are all included as additional costs. Now, when we write the fiscal emergency plan as dictated by the state, if there is a position that is not currently hired, such as needing to hire firemen or policemen or whoever, we're instructed by them to use the highest rate of the family plan for health insurance for each of those positions. That way, when you are writing the plan and funding the position, you're funding it at the highest potential level, even though most people will come in and get the couples or the single coverage or hopefully, you know, use their spouse's coverage from somewhere else. But that doesn't mean that's, that's the maximum cost that it's going to be. It's not the, the total cost.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll, I'll take a version of this cost. I'll add the need section that I just talked about, that kind of we threw up, and I'll grunt it by you before I do it. And then that's what I'm going to present as section two on the 14th. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah. Jim, but just in the breakout, some of those have been covered by contractors, so they're part-time. Some of those legal requirements, building commissioner, health commissioner has been part, just if that's a part of the analysis here as to whether or not, a building commissioner, and we've not had a community development director since Mr. Detmer, but for the building commissioner, we've had the previous, we had, we had a contractor that provided that, who replaced a previous contractor who provided that. So it's not been a full-time position. I don't know if it was, it was before I ever lived in Norwood. So that's one of the things that factor in is like how much of this, as far as the legal requirements. I would love to have a full-time building commissioner and full-time community development director. Yeah, that would be awesome to have, but that's, that's a way that that has been managed in the past, so.
And we've done very well with that, with, with using somebody who just is a part-timer to be our economic development director. Rick Detmer was, was one of the best guys for that job and it was a full-time position. He also worked on grant writing and many other areas and aspects within the city to move the city forward. But you're right, we can fill that with a part-time person and they can be here about four hours a week. And when the telephone gets, when somebody calls the city of Norwood and says, hey, we want to do this development, maybe he'll call them back, maybe he won't. It doesn't matter because he's a contractor. We can't really set his hours. We can't say, you need to be in the office, you need to be representing the city of Norwood. We can say, we got it covered because, and that's the problem. That's the whole problem with the, I think the health commissioner, it's been, it's been a problem. There are so many grants that we could get if we had a health commissioner that worked for the city of Norwood full-time. But we've had an interim health commissioner, James, I think you were the one who brought it up to me and said, we need to fill this position. Prior to me even getting elected, you said, we've got to figure out what we're doing here. We lose so much by trying, we're trying to do things part-time. Part-time doesn't work all the time and we really need to look at what we're doing and do it right. And I think, I think these positions are justified and I think that we need, the city of Norwood, as large as we are and with the budget that we have and with the grants that we can get, we can get, you know what, we can get grants, but Jim brought up a good point, and I think this is what you saw over the last year when there was a huge carryover of money that wasn't spent, that was budgeted but not spent by the administration? Because quite frankly, there just weren't people to run the project, to get the project to go on. We need a roof on City Hall, it's raining today. It went all the way to, to the finish line, but we didn't make it over the finish line because it got dropped. Well, we need people in place to do those projects and we can do it part-time. I don't think it's the right way to do it myself, but that's fine, Keith, but you can work part-time all you want.
Rick, I just want them to be aware, like we have a community center director that's being handled contractually now, but that's a part of the math calculus.
Okay. I just want you to be and everybody to understand my thoughts on it as the mayor of the city of Norwood. Filling positions with part-time people and getting part-time effort is not what the city of Norwood needs. You can go up and down the street and see that part-time effort is not working for us. And if we're not willing to spend a little bit of money and put people in that are dedicated to making a name for themselves, which Rick Detmer did, if we're not willing to put those people in place, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot. We're going to be in the same situation four years from now that we're in right now. And, and it's just, it's a challenge. I realize it. Do the numbers. I agree, do all the numbers. But when you look at the numbers, you really got to keep in mind what we're, what the real end goal is here. What's the plan? What we're trying to provide to our community members? And it's a step up from what we've been getting. And granted, a lot of that's been dictated by our finances and what we can do, but we're starting to move in the right direction. Let's not stumble around now. Let's get it going. And that's really my, my whole point of doing all of this was to like, let's put the people in place, let's see how it works, let's make, make it happen. Council has, has changed positions in years past where they said, we don't think these positions need to be there. They've, they've consolidated positions if they weren't getting their bang for the buck. And I'm sure that councils in the future will do the same.
Thanks for that. I don't think it changes kind of how we're going to take that second section in terms of expecting you guys to have to say yes or no now. I think I was hoping for that. There's still that needs-based analysis that I'm going to kind of do for us and I'll send it to the floor, you know, with, well, six of us here, really, before we bring it on the 14th, but did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I mean, I still, I know I've said it, you know, I'll say it one more time, but, you know, I think it's a mistake to say that, you know what, we're going to just ignore current employees because they've already accepted the job. And I think Mr. The auditor kind of, kind of, you know, commented on that, saying that some of these positions, sure, maybe they, they're going to continue working for the next few months, right? But these are people, again, that have had their, their pay ranges have been frozen for the last 10 years. And with the exception of just a couple of these, most of these, when we adjust the pay ranges, if we do them all systematically, they don't actually result in a pay increase because they're already above the bottom of that new range. So I still just want to encourage this council to, I know that you're going to look at the, this committee, excuse me, I know you're going to look at, you know, do they accept the job already? What's the needs? But, you know, it's, I think we just need, I truly believe that this needs to be done comprehensively. I think we can get it done comprehensively, even if we have to adjust a few of the bottom of some of these in order to not give them a raise if the ordinance is passed. I think we can get it done and I think we can get it passed on the 14th. I mean, I truly believe that it is doable. My concern is that we pass these updated pay ranges and then we wait for the, you know, mayor's office to get us a new financial recovery plan that then has to be approved by council and approved by the financial recovery commission. And by the time that we get that plan, there's, all of these things have come up and so all of the other offices that are not council or the mayor's offices are now just going to, just wait till next year, wait till whatever. My concern is that it doesn't get done. And so I just want to make sure that that's expressed, that while you're looking at that needs analysis, I truly believe that we should just be adjusting all of these ranges all at the same time.
Well, please. So, all right, that's a good, that's a, I'm glad you said that because one of the questions, we know what the ordinance the mayor put in, we know what that's kind of going to impact, $250,000?
Total for everyone.
Hold on, which one?
Uh, 250 is correct, the one that was put in by the mayor and...
What's the total for the one with everybody? That's what?
And again, it affects what, what fund is affected by the individuals. So when you're talking about increasing 250,000, the increase may be a little higher than that, but remember, we're talking about general fund money and a number of these individuals are split between two funds and at least one other individual is paid completely out of another fund, so they don't affect the general fund. So, you know, what is the overall effect? I have one person in my office that might increase 2,500 a year. Another one of the professional offices that's listed here, when I looked, it's going to be less than $600 a year. Another one of the professional offices that I looked at, based on current employees, they're going to go up about $6,000 a year. So we're not talking a lot of money, I would say totally under $10,000. Now, understand there are offices here that are not fully staffed now. So you would be changing the ranges of the salaries of people that are not yet hired, but based on those that are here now, it's under a $10,000 change.
All right, so, I mean, what I would say for ordinance A, we know what that impact's going to be. What's the impact for ordinance B? Just all together. And how does this go in line with the financial recovery plan? Has it kind of been?
Well, the other part of this is to consider, I spent significant amount of time today and yesterday and on the 1st in my office, trying to put together payroll projections, which is the largest part of the fiscal emergency plan, using five-year forecast, fleshing these out. By the end of February, or by the end of January, we're going to have to have these done to plug in the plan. And so if decisions aren't made by the end of January, which numbers do we use in that plan? You know, do we stay with the existing ones we have? There's a lot of questions and a lot of changes that'll happen within that, but it's not something you can sit down and just change in a day. There's a lot of work that goes into those. And then once we get all of the payroll in, then we look at our fixed expenses and we put those in, and then we looked at our standard contractual materials and supplies, adding in the budgets from the department heads that came in and add those in, and then plug in capital improvements on top of that. Not that capital improvements are last because we've got a starting block of what the plan was passed, passed last year, those numbers are already in there. So now we got to move the ones that weren't done forward and add new things in. So that's kind of a, you know, how much does it actually equate to? I could figure that out here in just a couple of minutes, but it's not going to include, you know, things like the change that, how it trickles down through their pension and everything else. We're talking base salary change.
Yes.
If you're going to say net change, including insurance and everything else, it gets much more complicated because we don't know who, we'd have to look at what people are currently getting with that. So, but yeah, I've got it on this sheet here, I can just add up this.
With ordinance A here, I mean, we kind of know what, what that impact's going to be. And I'm still, I'm not sure if this has even been through the FRP folks.
No.
So we don't even know how this is going to affect us with that.
We have a fiscal emergency plan now. We must write a new one, get it passed by council and get it passed by the fiscal emergency commission by the 26th of March of this year. We will be committing ourselves for the next year to that plan. So a lot of effort needs to go in, in this first 60 days of the year, of which three are gone, to create that plan, to get it to council in a reasonable amount of time so that you guys can see it, that first meeting in March. But even after we create the plan, working with the mayor's office, when I say we, I'm presenting the payroll information, they're putting all the projects in, we make that plan together, we present that to the state. The state has to go through and do their thing with it before we can even bring it to council. And as we've learned in the past, sometimes their thing can take three weeks or more, you know? It, it takes a while for that process. So, but anyway, the FRP is really that kind of looming thing, right? That March 26 deadline. And that's not when we have to have it done. That's when they have to pass it. I'll total these up.
That's, that's my main concern, that's going to be my main concern, until we kind of can see how that's going to affect us and we do. And going back, you're saying that, not to say the capital improvements are last, but sometimes it's, it's been the feeling that they are kind of last. And that's something that I would like to accomplish is put those first.
Yeah, and they're, and they're built in the plan, the existing one, I'm not sure if you've seen.
How would this, and that's something I want to know and get more comfortable with is how does this take away from the potential for those? And I think a lot of people out there would like to know that as well.
Well, I think to have that discussion, you need to talk about where we are financially at this time, which we haven't done yet.
I would love to enter that conversation.
I kind of want to wait. And it will happen. We're going to do the, when we hand you a dozen review, we're going to show the carryover encumbrances and that position.
That is something I feel like, I feel like we have to have that conversation and have a, a more educated conversation on these ordinances because until we know what we're coming in with, how we're going to be affected and what we're going to be able to do after that with capital improvements, I don't think we can really speak on either of these ordinances clearly and...
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it. So got two things. First question to, I may have more than two, but two things right now. The auditor, you said that it would be about, at one point you said it would be about $10,000 more to pass for B over A, right? Because you said there were just some minimal increases because most of the positions are currently paying above the new minimum range that would be in B for like the six extra positions.
That's correct.
So, okay, so, and that's fine, I don't need an exact number, just, so essentially, if he says it's about 200,000 to pass, to pass A, then it's...
250.
250 to pass A, then it would be about 260 to pass B. So I guess my thing is, if we're, if we're going to pass A, and I'm not saying we have to or whatever, I don't really have a superposition, but I am definitely sympathetic to the troubles of trying to find employees that are worthy of the city of Norwood at this pay. But if we're going to pass A, we might as well do B and have a clean ordinance that has everybody included and also just increases the range, but not the salary, except just for those few people that are already under that minimum. So I guess that's just my point of why I support B and, because it's only about 10,000 more. And I will say, I do appreciate Mr. Kelch's concerns because I feel like in the past, it's not all, capital improvements have not been the focus of the city. The city is basically, how can the city operate to, you know, essentially, my opinion, the cities operate in the past, you know, a couple decades, how can the city operate to benefit its employees the most essentially? And that's not the elected officials necessarily always making that decision. And that's not the elected officials necessarily always making that decision, sometimes it's those union contracts that have been set up to, to be like that. But I do agree, uh, with Mr. Kelch, that we've gotta, we gotta fix the issues first, and, uh, uh, but potentially though, I mean, if it works when we get to item D, or what, you know, to look at the changes, I mean, I'm supportive, I'm just saying, if we're gonna do the raises, and it's just very little more to, or if we're gonna do the, the scale increases, it's very little more to do all of them versus just, uh, the narrower section.
You, you could state within the ordinance, if you're worried about how it affects the FRP, and we need to adjust the new FRP to represent these ranges, you can state within the ordinance that the existing positions for the other elected offices, uh, that the new ranges do not go into effect until April 1st. And that way, it has no effect on the current FRP, and is only built into the new one. Um, I think that you, the ones that don't have people in them, you should consider changing them now, because it's not like you're going out and hiring them all yesterday, they're gonna be hired in over time. And so if you hire someone February 1st at 10% higher than what the FRP had in it, you have 1/12 already not expended. So you would be able to stay within the FRP hiring at that higher pay range, because you didn't expend any of the money in January that you were interviewing the people. Now you've gotta build it into the new FRP, and that rolls forward for five years.
And I, I just, I would like to clarify too, that I'm not against paying people what they're valued, what they're worth, um, I'm just wanting to know where this stacks up against what we have coming in, and those capital improvements, because I feel like we have very important housekeeping items we need to take care of before we go, you know, paying other people more things, um, and that's just where I'm at with that. And I know a lot of people are worried about that, and if we can do both, and that would be nice, but that's something that we have to figure out, we have to learn, so that we can make an educated decision based on these ordinances. And I have no doubt that the people are worth that, and the vacant positions, you know, I've had many talks with the mayor about how he needs those filled, so we can move forward, and we can do these great things that we wanna do for the city, I think we just need to be careful about it, and not put ourselves in a bad position to where we can't fix these capital improvements that we need, must be fixed.
In, in being with the city for a few years now, um, I realize, as many of our citizens do, our problem is that we have an infrastructure problem in the city, and we have a crumbling infrastructure, an inadequate infrastructure in many ways. Part of that is the streets, the water, this building, but part of that too is the bureaucratic infrastructure that we've seen disappear since 2003. If no one's here doing the job, the job doesn't get done. So it's, the first step in improving our infrastructure is putting together that political and bureaucratic infrastructure we need to do the business of running the city, to bring more funds in, to find those grants, to put the projects together. And even when we look at the, when we look at the, uh, capital improvements plan, to make it happen, and not just put it on paper like last year, but to make this stuff happen.
And I don't know, I don't know if I have it in front of me here, cuz I haven't looked, but what do we have in the capital improvements, the capital improvements plan, I'm sorry, for the, you know, storm sewer issue in Ward 1, per se? Cuz that's a big capital improvement item, that I, I'm not a contractor, I don't know, I'm not a sewer guy, but I think it's gonna be pretty expensive.
I'll tell you a second. Here's a copy, but I think you're looking at...
So, there's about $850,000 worth of projects that were slated and funded for 2019 that were not completed. There's projects planned for, or funded in the current FRP to be done in 2020. When we write the new FRP, we need to make sure that we take all of those ones from 2019 that weren't done, which is reflected by our, which is reflected by our positive carryover this year, and make sure that those are applied to 2020 to get those done and started.
That's what he's saying to add to.
Yeah, we gotta find out what we have to add to it, and right here, it doesn't really have anything.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, why it doesn't.
Okay.
It's just, okay, uh, so essentially, the stormwater management fund, that's the fund that, you know, the safety service director pretty much exclusively controlled last, uh, last year, and it only had so much in it. We had put in there, I mean, council had, or the finance committee, when we made this draft one, I mean, we wanted to make sure that it was known that that was a priority for us, so we put it on here, but we couldn't appropriate money, or we, we couldn't tell them that you have to spend the money there, I guess, I guess we probably could've wrote an ordinance to do it, but they had other, I mean, they were prioritizing their limited stormwater management fund money for whatever they had to do, but it's listed here, just so that it didn't get forgotten, that it was known that it was a priority, and I do agree that, like, I hope that we can find a way to make sure that that happens this year, or early next year, so that, uh, it can be done, cuz I'm, we can get, if we have to get the funds to do it, I think that we can, there's creative ways to do it.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's my understanding, we are coming in with, you know, the black a little bit, we're all coming in with a little money.
In, yes, in a number of funds, so, uh, oh, here. I don't think there's any carryover, but sixty, yeah. So, uh, you know, understand that the, the city operates on fund accounting, and that we have to create a different accounting unit or fund, uh, based on the restriction of the revenue source. So money that comes in from a grant to buy car seats, don't, doesn't go to the general fund, because that grant designates, it must be managed in a fund of its own. So the funds that get outside of the general fund, which pays for most things, you know, that's where the police and the fire, and my office, and city council, and everything is, um, outside of that, we have three funds that pay for streets, Fund 2, which is street maintenance and repair, Fund 3, which is the state highway fund, and State 5, which is permissive tax. Uh, just a, a quick history as to the street fund, we used to pay payroll for street people, to people to work for streets out of that, we used to pay for paint and tar and salt, and the electric bill for all of the streetlights. Starting two years, two, three years ago, we moved those out to a street key in the general fund. So now we have an $850,000 carryover in the street fund, and we're gonna be looking at another $800,000 revenue, because the state just increased the gasoline excise tax. So we should, once the certificate of estimated resources filed by the end of this year, roughly have about $1.6 million just in the street fund. That doesn't pay for those other things that we discussed, that's only used for street projects for matching funds. Permissive tax also coming in, that's the trucking fees, the truck license fees, that's a different fund, Fund 5, it's gonna see a bump, because it also gets that gasoline money coming into it also. Uh, state highway will see a little bump. So we're gonna have money that can be used for matching funds. We have funds that only deal with, you know, refuse, only deal with water, only deal with health department grants, and each one of those has some carryover, or the majority of them have some carryover at the end of this year. The general fund, which is the big one, which is the one that we need as our general operating fund, does have a significant carryover, based on our results that we have today, which is prior to our closeout that'll happen on Monday, we're looking at about $3.8 million unencumbered, meaning we take the cash balance, we subtract all open purchase orders for things that are already agreed to buy that we haven't gotten the bills for yet, those are the encumbrances, and then we have an unencumbered amount of $3.8 million. Understand, 850,000 or more of that is projects that should've been done last year that were budgeted, that, that didn't happen, so that's part of it. Another big part of it, over $500,000, is two revenue sources, which will not be repeated this year, that we can't count on, and number one is a sale of property for about $260,000, which we don't have that much more property to sell. And the other one is, uh, the rebate that we got from the state's, uh, workers' compensation fund, which, you know, the end of every year, they look at how much money there is in all the communities that go into it, and they say, okay, we're gonna split this up and give it back to the communities. Well, if there's a lot of workers' comp claims, that's not there, so we can't count on that as revenue. So you have 500,000 there and 850 there, that's a big part of our 3.8 million. Now, we've got some projections as to, you know, how, how much our revenues were over expected, um, so we saw, you know, what makes that carryover is how much revenue was above projected, about 1.8 million, 500,000 with those two sources that we had, so about 1.3 million up, that's great. The rest of it is decrease in expenditures, those keys where we had money and had planned to spend it, but didn't get spent. And so those two things create that carryover. You need, according to, you know, the government, you know, GAAP, the generally accepted accounting principles, and the Government Financial Officers Association's recommendation, is that your cash carryover, your unencumbered carryover at the beginning of every year, should be the equivalent of the previous year's January total expenditures, which for us is between 1.4 to 1.6 million. So before you sit there and go, oh, we have 3.8 to spend, you gotta take like 1.6 off and go, no, that's our, that's what pays the bills in January, we need to end the year with at least 1.6 carried over, if not more. So there is money there, and there is leeway there, and there's money to do the projects that we have, plus the, the projects that are on the books, plus some additional ones, you know? I'd like to see us, well, I'm not gonna go into all that, but there's things that I know we need for certain departments that I think we should be taking care of sooner rather than later.
Well, thank you, I think you answered a lot, and I think you're very informative. I appreciate it.
I've got, um, I passed that out, some of the stuff that I did pass out to you guys, um, and I give these out every month, general fund monthly revenue, uh, actual versus projected for each one of the major keys, so you've got taxes, license and permits, intergovernmental...
Oh, my God.
...intergovernmental revenue, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous revenue, two lines, the top one on each one is the projected monthly that we started the year with, the bottom line is the actual, and then you'll see the difference, things that are in parentheses or brackets are negative or below the projected amounts, the end, year-to-date in each column, and then, uh, the total amount at the very bottom. Now that is, this is unaudited, and we're not completely closed out, but nothing's gonna change in a material manner before we close out on Monday. There's a couple of graphs that are included with this, you'll see earnings tax, actual versus predicted, um, and it just follows month by month, these charts are automatically created, and then, month by month, the, uh, total general fund revenue, actual versus predicted. And then the bar graph is the year-to-date earnings tax compared year-to-year for December, um, and the year-to-date general fund revenue, uh, year-to-year. So you can see our climbing revenue, uh, you'll see that it has gone up, it was going up steeply, and now it's kinda leveling off a little bit, but it's, it's still got a little bit of an increase, but, you know, hopefully it doesn't take a big tank again like it did there in 2012, well, which was our really bad year. Just to give you an idea of, and the idea of the, the graphs is to show the ebb and flow of the revenue as it comes in, we use that to look at our cash flow on a monthly basis, and match it to our projected expenditures that we look at monthly, which is something that we track within our office to make sure that we could do things like make payroll. Because while I say that there are things we should be spending on, that money on now, I don't ever wanna be in 2012 again, I don't ever wanna be in a situation where I'm worrying if I can make payroll without going negative at the end of the month. I don't ever wanna look at an employee and say, ah, you can't cash out your time yet 'cause we just don't have the money. We're not gonna ever get to that point, well, not that, that I'm around, but, um, you know, sometimes the economy tanks, and when is that gonna happen again? And what kind of a reserve do we need, and what do we need to make sure we're holding on to, to make sure that we can, uh, keep our head above water for that?
Yeah, I'll just comment too, just, so, looking at, I think one thing just to highlight, and something that kind of I've always had in my mind, when I was Chair of Finance, is that when you look at the dip in 2012, right? This, there wasn't a ton of levers the city had to pull, because Norwood is very unique in the sense that in our union contracts for the police and fire, there is mandated staffing levels that are in there. And so when we're looking at contracts, when we're looking at, uh, you know, that kind of thing, we can't look at them and, and try to say, look, oh, well, we have this money now, so yeah, let's just staff, let's just put in the contract that we have this many employees, because you know what? Then it screws the elected officials in the future when there is, uh, a drop in revenue, and, uh, the unions aren't willing to play ball, and now we've gotta go and lay off or not hire a bunch of people in the non-safety side, right? Uh, just so that there can always be a maintenance of the same people on the safety side. And very, very, very few other cities have anything like what's in our contract, cities in Ohio. And so, uh, just wanna make sure that that's known, uh, you know, we can keep that in mind, because if we start approving things now, because, oh, look, revenue's pretty high right now, well, where it's gonna really hurt us, just like it did in 2012, uh, if we're, we're not anticipating that, if we're not putting things in there to account for that. So, you know, nothing, no action today, of course, but just something I kinda wanted to highlight while he was talking about the 2012 and all of the struggles that happened, you know, that year, and some of those years thereafter.
What, no pie charts today?
Only, only bar and line graphs.
I have not seen anyone, I have not seen anyone or witnessed anybody ignoring any public employees. What we are talking about, we, we, at, at the beginning of the discussion, we took, we discussed, correct me if I'm wrong here, we discussed reporting out that the executive assistant to the mayor, um, to be approved, those positions, and the safety service director. Is that what we discussed at the beginning of the meeting? That we were okay in those three positions? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
So, we're gonna report that, that we're gonna approve that, that we're gonna report that maybe the resolution, uh, draw, be drawn up, and, and that get passed, so... If there's other positions that, on this list, that are required, that are necessary to, to move forward quickly, then we need to get those out in the open. Other than that, I think we need to really move in, in, in a forward in a manner that's fiscally responsible, and not just, not ignoring other employees, but let's get these passed and move on. So let's, you guys wanna talk about all this, but what happened to being fiscally respons- so, so now, so that what you just said is our revenue is, looks good right now, but what if? And we don't know that, what if? So let's get these passed, let's move on, and let's talk about this, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned that we're getting, yeah, let's, I mean, I, I don't wanna say that people don't deserve what we're talking about, but let's get this passed and moving in a way that's fiscally responsible.
In this, when you said "this passed," there were three parts, and I'm gonna recap them, because I think it's really important. First one you mentioned, executive assistant, administrative assistant, safety service director.
Yes, sir.
Second part, everything else in that office, many of which were not filled today. Uh, Mayor Schneider talked about some of those needs base, some of them being legal, but that, non-safety service director, non-executive assistant, non-administrative assistant, net increase was some 250K, plus a plus or minus, that, that we don't know. Then there was a third section, which was everything not on the original ordinance, but added to, and I think James's point was, if you're going to do B, you might as well do C, because there's only a $10,000 increase from what they're already being paid.
I appreciate that.
So I think the real struggle here is not the first, and not really the third, probably, but when I, and I, I've already volunteered myself to do this, when I put together the line-by-line, is it filled, is it not filled, needs-based assessment, and the incremental cost, some of them will be incremental cost, some of them won't, that will be kind of really the talk, the sticking point on the 14th. So, uh, when you said, let's just get them passed, I just wanna say, like, there's the first, there's the third, which I think are pretty easy, the middle one's kind of the hard one for some folks.
I may have missed, but I say, let's get it passed, let's get it wrote up, and let's get it to council.
Oh, I understand, okay.
So, I appreciate that, um, so...
Okay, alright, yeah.
I think, I think somebody's saying something about one, some of their, like, very important, I think is the health commissioner, building commissioner, like the EPA, the health commissioner. And, I mean, what, what was the original, the current pay for that, I'm sorry, for the health commissioner or the building commissioner?
The health commissioner has been a volunteer.
Like, what's the existing pay scale, as it stands today?
It is, yeah.
I just wanna see what the jump is.
Yeah, 2,000. Oh, no, sorry, sorry, sorry.
33, 2,009.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my point...
53 to 70.
And what's the building conditioner, commissioner?
For currently, 52,000 to 67,000 is the range.
Is there a range? I don't think we've had a full, I don't remember when we had a full-time building commissioner.
No. And it's been a health commissioner for years.
And do you, do you already have interest in those?
Why was that other person? Or... No, the building commissioner job, I, and that's, that's a position where I've went out and started looking around, who has the certification, that's the, that's the tough part about it. I don't think that the city of Norwood didn't want to have a chief building official dedicated to the city of Norwood. The problem and the challenge is finding that person, because that requires a, a degree in engineering or an architecture degree, and then other... degree and then other qualifications above that. And that's one of the reasons why it's set where it is, that the building commissioner salary is set where it is, because I think it's going to be tough to find that person. I think that it's necessary and we can save money if we had that person. I do think we had that person in the seventies and when we had a city engineer and when we had a city electrician, we had multiple other positions. And granted, that was the heyday, you know, but I, I think if we could get back to a building commissioner, if we could get a dedicated individual who is our building commissioner, we could do a lot and, and we could, we, we would do a lot better. We save a lot of, in other areas that would cover that expense. We pay plans exam, for plans examination. We have a lot of different expenses with that. Do I think that we're, I don't have a person sitting there that's ready to go. And I don't, I don't, a couple of these positions, I don't have a person sitting there ready to go that said, if you can get the pay where I can feed my family and live, I'll do it. But this puts me in a position to actually start the process, like Jim was saying, you know, it's going to take a little time to get these people on board. You know, there's, there's a couple of people that potentially would work that have stated interest, but it's, it's going to be a search to find them.
And also, I, I missed this, I'm sorry. Um, the superintendent of public works, what was the current on that too?
Current pay is 53,000 to 70.
When I do my write-up, I'm going to make sure.
I'm just trying to get this from my own.
I'll have it on.
Cause I, I am more worried about, i- if, if we're faced with this and I, and it looks like we are here and I, and we, sometimes we're going to have to spend a little money to make some money here and I get that. But it does concern me that some of these positions are vacant and some of them are definitely in need, like the health commissioner. Um, safety service director, we're trying to lump into this first part, but just kind of looking at the old pay scale, the new pay scale, just to see kind of the difference if we don't just lump those in.
Yeah. Let me just, we get, uh, one thing to remember that even if we were to add those into the, you're trying not potentially lumping those into that first version.
The vacant ones, yes.
Right. So even if we, we add those in right now, I mean, uh, I don't think that the mayor can actually hire them until we change the financial recovery plan because there's not money in there. Now, maybe there's a way to do it and I don't, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say that you can't. I'm just saying that I don't know. So, uh.
That would be my, under the contract, for example, we've been paying a building commissioner contractor. So there's money budgeted there that would offset a lot of the salary money.
Gotcha.
And so that's the factors, how many months in you are, are you within a percentage of what the, the end pay would end up being when you get that far. And, and even then, I'm not sure the fiscal recovery, what, what the, we did this last year, I'm not sure exactly. If the mayor hires somebody beyond what's covered in the fiscal recovery plan in February, how much of a, you know, exactly what that, when that, you know, irresistible force meets that movable object on that, exactly how that plays out. But there is some play.
So, and the reason, okay, so the reason why I brought that up is, um, so, I mean, I don't even know. I guess my concern is that all, all of these are, everything but the safety service director and I guess the changes, they're all just flat 10% increases. And so to me, it's like, I, I do hear that, yes, they need, you know, the struggle here, but I guess I would hope, I mean, it's harder for me to justify, like, trying, you know, to not go with B if we're, if there wasn't more thought into this than just 10% each because they've been frozen for 10 years. And I know that the thought behind that, but like the building commissioner, I just can't imagine, I really don't know who you're going to get to start out at, uh, the current pace 52,000, but even with that.
Well, you, you did not hear me say, Councilman Bonzel, that I won't be coming to council asking for more money to get them higher in this.
And that's, that's a valid point.
Which is part of it.
Yeah, and that's a valid point.
Potentially, if I find the right person and I, and I, I'm going to come to council and say, this person will be great. This is what they bring to it and try to get it. But I don't have that, I don't have that person sitting there right now.
Yeah. And I guess, and I'll finish this with this, is that I think getting the ranges done as soon as possible is good so that he can, he can work on that, but like, he won't be able to. It won't be like he can hire this person immediately because he'll have to come back to us with, with the financial recovery plan that we can pass and then we can change the 2020 appropriations so that he can make some of those hires. From my current understanding, another, again, I might be misunderstanding, but.
This just sets the ranges. It does not appropriate or budget for the position. If we do not set ranges by, let's say, the mid-February, when we're, that point where the state's looking at the FRP because you guys want to see it in early March, it will be locked into whatever you haven't passed by then.
Which isn't.
Yeah. Well, then the problem comes if you decide come July, hey, we're going to change these. Well, you got to wait till the next March because the Fiscal Emergency Commission has shown a real intent that they're not changing it unless something catastrophic happens. So whatever we get in March, which if you guys want to see it early in March, then it's the end of February. What, and then the state's going to take a couple of weeks to look at it. So whatever we don't have by, let's say, February 15th, we're stuck with for the next 13 months.
I mean, potentially, you can still budget in, like, even if we don't pass the changes, like, you all can anticipate what changes you would want to see and you can budget that into your plan, even if we haven't passed this. But I will say it's a much better practice to get this done beforehand.
I would say that the state is going to look at whatever ordinances we have and say, why did you change this to me? And I'll make an argument and they'll go, well, they didn't, they didn't do it yet. They're, we're using the ordinance you have.
Yeah. I mean, I guess it's, I guess it's a chicken and an egg thing, but it, it could go either way. I mean, I can see them saying, oh my gosh, you passed this ordinance and you didn't, you know, you didn't change the plan first.
Yeah. Just, just be aware of the timelines, all I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know?
So basically, we've agreed to, to a few things that you're going to report out. Now, what's, does it make sense for the rest of this to go to council or to go to the committee of the whole so that others can have input or, because, as far as?
So in the, in this, you know, we're talking about time here.
Because they got.
I, I think, sorry to.
No, go ahead. Please, please. I'm sorry.
I don't think so. And, and the reason for that is I, two of the council members, when they voted to put this to finance committee, they were basically saying, I want you people to go bring back a version that we can go vote on. There's a time sensitivity to this. We've talked about it for two different reasons. And so I would say that it's, I felt the obligation result, that we should result from this meeting with a very clear set of ordinances that we're going to vote on. Multiple readings up too.
I would agree with that.
And that, that ordinance is going to be these three things that we just discussed.
It's probably going to be three.
Right now.
Or.
I would also probably like to put the section four part in there too, where he gets the leeway to negotiate.
So, so, well said. And I was going to lay that out and then the other.
Nobody spoke on yet and I just wanted to mention that, that I feel like that's, that's really awesome.
We haven't. There were three other points that were made. One of them was, uh, Councilman Thompson talked about, uh, making the lower band to what he called a livable wage. I presume he meant $15 an hour, but.
Yeah.
He said 50, he said specifically $15 an hour.
Um, so we'll talk about the $15 an hour quickly and I know we want to watch time. The original request was 5% leeway for autonomous negotiation, not 10. Um, that sort of makes sense. I bet we can all get aboard with that quickly. And then there was section five, part-time versus full-time on the auditor's office. Um, I don't know where that kind of fit, um, especially because.
I would like, I would like to have that removed as well as the two places that talk about assistant deputy auditor, if full-time, if part-time. We're in a situation where a few years ago I had the opportunity to hire a skilled person who said I could do this job less than full-time and not take benefits. And so we paid her more per hour to basically be the part-time person that did it. Now, that's because she had a lot of experience with the software and, and, and archaic software that was made in 1995 that people aren't around that know how to use it. Um, that is an exception. That is a full-time position that I came to council and said, hey, we're going to save some money by making it part-time, but as part of this agreement, when this person leaves, it goes back to being a full-time position for me to go out and hire. So having this wording in here affects how I would manage my office. It's my office to manage. It's a full-time position. I chose to hire someone part-time for less than the bottom range of the salary. That should be my right as an administrator of my office and it should just say what the position is full-time in this and not dictate piecemeal how I run my office.
So Jim, you just wanted, just back to the full-time?
Exactly.
Okay. I just incorporated what was currently on the books affecting.
Right.
2019.
I, I think it's a, it's, it's a good opportunity. I know you've done it in your office too. And you, as an administrator, have that right to say, I've got a great person who doesn't need to be full-time. Um, I think that you should have the right that when that person is no longer there, definitely hire back to a full-time position. And I, I'd like to not see the ordinance get into full-time, part-time. I, I think that each one of us as administrators should be able to make that decision.
Is this, is this ordinance set?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I don't, I was going to say, I don't understand, I mean, I still don't understand the concern and I've expressed this to the auditor privately too, because it literally says on the ordinance, the auditor of the city of Norwood is hereby authorized to designate the position of assistant deputy auditor as either a full-time position with benefits or a part-time position not to exceed 29 hours a week with no benefits. So I think having it in here keeps it simpler and I don't under, I guess I don't understand how that affects your ability.
What if I decide to do that for somebody else in my office? You know, what if it's not that position? You know, it's just like Keith has somebody in his office, Mr. Moore, that's not a full-time position there because it saves the city money. They do a great job. It works for him and as an administrator, he can make that decision. You don't have to.
Should we just abolish ordinance 11 dash 2014 then? Since, because that's specifically for that position. So if you're saying that Keith should have the ability, if that's all, if that's the way it works now, why do we even have the special ordinance there? And why are we even calling it? I guess I don't understand why we have that ordinance back then, if you're saying that can happen without the ordinance.
There were several people that had come to the city, um, that had similar deals like that in the past. And what we were doing was paying them more per hour than the bottom hourly range if it was a full-time person. So if you took the bottom hourly range, bottom salary range, broke it into hourly, that's the starting hourly rate. We were saying because we're hiring somebody without benefits and not being full-time, we wanted a higher hourly rate for them.
Gotcha. I mean, I guess I still.
I would say that ordinance just stands the way it is. And when that position is gone, as it states in that ordinance, the person, because that's, that's for one individual. It shouldn't be in here for everyone else.
So it's a special clause for just one case?
One person, one case.
I don't see a person.
Jim, there's three ordinances over 10 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, take it out, make it clean.
And that's what the, that's what ordinance B does. And just, it literally copies the language that's in the 11 dash 2014 and puts it in our 2020 version. That way we can just all be here. And I don't think it takes away, and again, I'm happy to work with the auditor to try to see if we can get this language any better, but I feel like it remain, keeps all the rights of the auditor that it currently has in that session.
All right. So, um, there are two points we're going to hit. I just want to make sure we end, kind of target ending this at eight, or at least this is part of the discussion at eight. Um, in terms of process, and this is very much a question for you guys to help me understand. We're going to bring revised ordinances to the, to the January 14th, uh, general council meeting. We want to talk about that first section, the first three points. One of the problems I foresee happening is if people take, if enough people take issue with that second section or everyone outside of executive assistant, administrative assistant, safety service director, that could hurt kind of that very critical part that he's trying to hire in the next, I don't know, whoever he starts to hire that. So do I make, can we recommend three different ordinances or how, in process, what's the best practice for that?
Yeah. I, I think you might, might want to ask the law director if it comes to, let's say we pass that first version that's slimmed down, but then we also pass the second version that's, maybe a second version that's more expanded. I, I would recommend that this committee, uh, pick one of the versions and, uh, frankly, just try to only have two on there. So have the first one that's, you know, the, the slimmed down version and then the second one that is, you know, as complete as possible. So, uh.
And that's already made for us and, and called B on the agenda. So that's already here, right here.
Are you talking about B, you're talking about B on the original agenda or on the, for the first meeting?
Yeah.
And it's, exactly. So that's, I mean, it would be my recommendation that we go with the ordinance B, uh, as that second ordinance and not have that third, which I guess would be the A.
Your logic being the $10,000 difference is not that big.
And then it makes, and it just provides a much more complete ordinance that is just easier to manage for the future. And, and we can also add a clause in there. So if we're concerned about that $10,000, we can add a clause exactly as the auditor suggested that anybody that is an existing employee whose pay ranges, whose, whose pay could be increased by moving the pay range up, uh, you know, it doesn't start till April 1st or that the, you know, any existing employee, their pay range doesn't change until April 1st, whatever that clause might be. But we can put that in there, then I think that satisfies all of it and we might have an ordinance ready to go for.
Oh, cool. I, yes, well said. I completely agree with that one. That's, that makes a lot of sense. You guys?
I like the first part with, um, the safety service director, the two positions, the executive assistant, the mayor and administrative assistant. And I'm not sure why we can't kind of like get through the financial recovery plan stuff, get better understanding of our budget, what we're going to have, work against our capital improvements and then kind of revisit this after that.
And that could be your vote, you know? That's, that's why I want to put it.
I think that would be, you know, that gives.
My, my opinion is.
I think so. Let's, I want to hear John first.
I, I, this, this is what I was going to vote on and anything outside of this, I'm not going to agree to. So this, I will agree to that and I'll put, and I'll vote to pass that. So I do not want to see a mixture of these two ordinances. So this is one ordinance, this is a second. So I personally would not like to see them mixed. That's just my opinion and I'm one of seven. So.
Why? I mean, I guess that's, what, what is your, what's your hangup on it?
This is my ordinance. This is, this was the ordinance that was drawn up and brought to us. This was a second ordinance that was drawn up that was in response to this ordinance. And that's, that's my, that's my response to, this is the one that I'd like to see in front of us. And if you want to make, if you want to pass those three, then, then I'm okay with that. The other ones on here, we can, we can talk about table, whatever. This one here, you can bring this to, to another one. If that's what, if that's what you see fit, that's how I would recommend doing this instead of, I would not, I would not mince the two.
So for you, it's not the $10,000 incremental add, it's the principle?
It's not, it's, I want to move forward in a fiscally responsible manner and I'd like to see these not minced. But I mean, maybe I'm wrong. If, if, there's seven of us, that's just one, one, one personal opinion.
Well, I mean, the, you want to add like not to not mix them. I mean, I think we should just put one forward, which is these three positions. So the mayor's office can get to work and start doing things.
That's right.
With the section four, the, the adjustment to negotiate hiring in there. And I don't have any preference, or I don't have any issues with adding the language in that allows his employee in his office that position to go back to being a full-time, since that was a special position. That is, would be perfect for me.
That's the first one.
So, uh, Mr. Brayden, what if we change the ordinance, ordinance B, what if we change the, change, put out of the clause saying just that no, any existing employee, if they, if they fall under the minimum range, if they're an existing employee, their pay just stays where it is, that, uh, they don't change. And then there's no increase in ordinance B versus ordinance A if you do that. I mean, that's, at that point, that's a pretty fiscal responsible way to go. And then when we actually get to the point of the fiscal recovery plan, we actually, you know, if we pass something that has some increases in there, then we can then, uh, pass some kind of separate motion to raise those persons, people's pay. But if we, so putting, basically what I'm saying is doing B and then just putting in there saying any existing employee, there's no, they won't get a raise even if they fall under that minimum, uh, set forth in the ordinance. So that would basically make it a revenue or a expenditure neutral change.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bonzel, and I would consider that. However, I, I need to, I need to, I don't think I'm going to change my stand when it comes to, when it comes to this. So, but I appreciate the comment. Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why, right now, my understanding is that you are considering two ordinances. One is a separate ordinance that puts the safety service director, the executive assistant to the mayor and the two part-time administrative assistants on one ordinance.
That's right.
And then the second ordinance is a rendition of Mr. Bonzel's ordinance that was presented, but with a clause, removing Jim's part, changing it to Eric Thompson's $15 an hour thing. And that, that is a, a really, you've, you've put together sort of a hybrid.
Yes.
But why would you do two? Why wouldn't you leave within, because in that ordinance B, which was Mr. Bonzel's, were the correct, were the safety service director and the executive assistant to the mayor correct?
Yeah, oh, yeah, all, everything.
I would. Of course I would. I'm trying to prevent, what I'm, what I'm trying to prevent in that idea is.
That they would not pass?
Yeah. If you do the whole, sorry, I think you're going to say.
Yeah, yeah. Essentially, what he wants to make sure that, I mean, he gets, covers his bases and covers, you know, make sure that you, going out of that 14th meeting on the January 14th, that you have something where you can hire the executive assistants and the, the executive assistant, administrative assistants, and you have that higher pay range for the safety service director. And that you, but you might be coming out of that meeting though too, with these other increases as well, but we just don't know that. And so because of that, he doesn't want to.
I see. Okay. I understand that thought process. That's.
Because we already heard them. Because we already heard them, them being, during the discussion on the first, that everyone was pretty okay with that first section, the top part of that first section. Everyone said it. And so, let's make sure that that happens, because that was the will of the seven council members. The second one, we'll see. I, I think that we're gonna try to put the language in there that satisfies your concerns, but you may or may not vote on it, so I don't want to pigeonhole.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would.
Sounds, sounds doable to me.
All right. So, it's 8:01. I'd like to try to do two things. We talked a lot about the financial standing for 2020. I want to give an opportunity to kind of make any other points, both from us four and Jim, and then it's really important, I develop that rhythm around current claims with the city, and I want to give time for Mr. Gary to do that. So, Jim, do you have any other points? I know you went through most of what you were gonna talk about in terms of standing.
Went through most of it. Early on, I'd really like you guys to look at that capital improvements plan, see what's on it, you know, start to get some ideas, talk to the mayor's office. You know, the mayor is the one who presents the plan. I'm working with him, running the numbers, putting things together. We need to be looking at the projects of fixing the things that are broken. Number two, we are closing out on Monday. Our actual year-end totals for expenditures and revenues will all be available, and each one of you will get a stack, a PDF form, a big stack of documents. And if you want to sit down and go through them, and I'll show you how to read them all, it doesn't take very long, and it'll give you all the information you need about expenditures and where the money goes, and where the revenue is, and kind of where we ended the year also. The, the certificate of estimated resources available for appropriations will be done by its due January 31st. We should have it done hopefully within two weeks and file it with the county, but it won't be official till they have their 31st meeting.
So, you, sorry to cut you off, if you explained to me, actually, once in December and once today, what that was, and I think it's really important for some of the other people to hear that.
So, at the end of the year, each fund, we have to take the carryover amount for each year, the cash carryover for every fund we have, minus the encumbrances or the open POs, add in projected revenues as projected, and come up with a total amount that we project for each fund that can be appropriated by you. You can't budget or appropriate money without that certificate. You can't go above the amounts that I set that are then approved by the county. We'll adjust it. If anything big happens, we'll adjust it right away, but usually we adjust it again in June, and we, we'll adjust it three or four times of the year. The final adjustment coming in December. And that shows you the money that's available for you guys to flag, for him to spend, or all of us to spend. That is something that has to be done by January 31st every year. Also, the year-end auditor's report will be done. You'll probably get it the first meeting of February, just because of some things that are going on towards the end of the month. But that'll show, kind of all, I don't know if you've seen the auditor's report that I put out every year, there's pie charts, he likes them. But the whole idea is it just shows, shows the totals of the revenues and expenditures, and kind of breaks them down into some digestible bits that, in, in different comparisons of where all our money goes. And it'll also show, like, the certificate will show what money is left over to go into other projects. If you look at the current fiscal emergency plan, the FRP, look at everything that says capital on it, those are the majority of the capital projects. Some of them are under debt service. If we say we're gonna buy something big and pay out it over, over years, but anything that's got a, you know, a value individually of more than $5,000 that we're purchasing should go into that new, the capital projects key, 7,600, so.
Well, that looks similar to this, where it has like the different areas and kind of how much we have that we can appropriate, less was already appropriated.
The certificate?
Yeah.
The certificate just tells you the total amount for each fund. The FRP shows each year how much we're projecting to spend in each key, and then shows the cash carryover each year. And then if you want to add things, like add a project, it'll decrease from the bottom and carry it forward. And as long as our end of five years is positive, if we can end, we ended 2019 positive. If we can end 2020 positive and have contracts, then it shows we can afford through the end of the five-year forecast and have a capital improvements plan that we show that we're not letting things decay, and show that it's positive at the end of that five years with that 1.4 to 1.6 million dollar carryover each year, we'll be out of fiscal emergency by the end of next year.
That'd be amazing. Let's do that.
That's a lot of work, though.
And, you kept saying and, and-
And, and, there's a lot, there's a list.
Well, that's why we're here, that's why we're doing-
That's good work, Jim.
And we gotta buy stuff. There's a lot of spend, expenditures that might, yeah, prolong that.
Is there any way you could probably like have anything like that by the 14th meeting? Kind of show, kind of might what we will have, or is that?
Um, I will by the 14th meeting have all of the revenue plugged into the current fiscal emergency plan, so it'll show, you know, it's a spreadsheet that I can, I can give you, that shows the revenue and expenditures for 19, and it'll show that carryover, and then you can just start adjusting it. But do you use, if, if you haven't used Excel much, I'll show you.
My wife's proficient.
There you go. You got it.
Of the FRP?
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate it.
All right. Lastly, just kind of looking out, outwards here, if Tim or Keith, any claims against the city, I think that, that'd be good for us to hear and bring to the 14th, once we have a discussion.
As he's coming up, anyone interested in looking at the current fiscal emergency plan for this, for the city of Norwood, go to the Auditor of State's website, Ohio Auditor of State. Do a, do a report search for the city of Norwood, it's there, you can download it.
Can I squeeze in here?
Is it on your website?
Uh, no, it should be the same. FRP on my site.
It is, it is, yep.
Yeah, it's the same. No, I'm just putting in the revenues and expenses, so it'll change.
I think that's fine.
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gladly. Thanks.
denied claims against the city. The document that I've given you this today includes what I'll characterize as smaller claims. I mean, there are other claims against the city that are in litigation, or, you know, in which we're, which we're handling, et cetera, but these are like pothole damage typically, that kind of thing. And I just wanted you to understand that there's roughly 10 or 12 of these that should be considered by this committee in, you know, in the weeks and months coming, going forward. The Finance Committee of the last council met and talked about a few of these, actually talked with some of the claimants. And, you know, I certainly have opinions about which claims have merit, which ones don't, et cetera, but I'm not always inclined to express my attorney-client privilege type information in an open setting like this. And, but there are no, there are no pending lawsuits in this, in this collection of claims that I'm aware of. I just want you to be aware, and I know it's 8:10 on a Friday night, I just want you to be aware that, you know, this is kind of the 30,000-foot view of the, of the small claims that are pending before the, that have been submitted to the council, and are generally considered by the Finance Committee with a recommendation to the council as to whether they should be paid or not.
Right.
Okay.
And the other thing that I want, not, in addition to just seeing what was out there-
Sure.
-that you've done, is that second part, the recommendation to council, do they recommend to you two how that, how we think that they should be handled?
No, they rec, generally, the Finance Committee would recommend the council as to how to resolve these claims. And there's a, there's a few factors that go into this. One is that there's a, there's a section, and I think it's Ohio advice code section 2744.05, which basically says that if there are other resources besides city resources to pay these claims, they get paid by those other resources. What does that mean? That means, for example, that if somebody has property damage insurance for their car, and they hit a pothole and cause, you know, and, and the city should be responsible for them hitting that pothole. And I'm not saying that every pothole, you know, that somebody hits is a city responsibility, because it's not. But, let's say they, they incurred $1,000 damage to their, to their vehicle. If they have a, a property insurance coverage that carries a $500 deductible, and the city was responsible for the pothole, legally responsible for the pothole, then they could recover 500 bucks from the city, not the 1,000.
Of course.
Because they've got their own collateral sources, okay? The other thing that, that the council should weigh as it's able to is, you know, whether the city had notice of various defects of, you know, in this case, most of these are pothole-type things, whether they had notice and an opportunity to respond. I see a couple of these in which I'm convinced that they had notice, based upon my contact with Public Works. I see others where I'm convinced that they didn't have notice, because for example, you know, somebody hits a pothole on a Monday night and calls our office on Tuesday morning reporting the pothole, you know, that kind of thing, and there wasn't a prior report. In that instance, notwithstanding the fact that somebody suffered some loss, the city's not responsible for fixing a defect that it didn't know about. But it, that relates to, you know, reaching out to Public Works, finding out whether the pothole had been reported, et cetera. I know of one instance, for example, that happened on, or one call that happened on December the 10th. Incident happened December the 9th in the evening. I got a call on December the 10th and was told, "Oh, that pothole's down by Stones Lanes." So, I contacted Public Works, they sent a crew down, couldn't find it. You know, Curb Lane, northbound Montgomery Road, Stones Lanes. Well, maybe it was a little north of that, so they went back and looked around Cleny and the block north of Cleny, couldn't find it. And then ultimately, later in the afternoon, they found one up at Montgomery and Mentor, okay, so some blocks north, you know? And that sort of thing happens. The point is that the city wasn't on notice of it until they found it, you know, the next day. And so, I don't think that particular claim, notwithstanding the fact that the motorist suffered a loss, has merit, based on what I think I know. And I, I mean, there's just a lot of stuff like that. They're all fact-driven functionally, and it's just a question of, you know, you want to be fair to people, but you don't want to give away, you know, taxpayer money that should not, that the city's not responsible to have to pay.
Of course.
That's what it boils down to. Okay? That's, you know, I have files and small packets, claim-type packets for all of these, but I, I just wanted to give you the, you know, the 30,000-foot look to say, "Hey, there's 10 or 12 of these that should be dealt with."
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you did. I, I think that, I feel a responsibility to do something about these claims, probably in a first-out, first-in, first-out methodology. But these guys didn't, the, the other three didn't know about that.
Sure.
So, I kind of want to give them some time to digest a good plan of attack, but it's just to let the committee members know that there's a, there's a target in my mind to go through these on some rhythm. And I think it's attacking the older ones first, and then we're partnering with you two to understand, "Hey, can, what are we allowed to see? Can we go through that claim detail a little bit better? Can we talk to the individual who made the claim?" And if we're allowed to, those are the type of things I want to be doing, maybe on, for these three, by the next general council, for these three on the next general council.
You're absolutely allowed to. And what I generally encourage would be a claimant to come in and talk with you, and for you to look at the actual claim documents. I mean, they're, none of them are horrible, none of these are horribly exhaustive. Just, you know, look at the documents, try to figure out what happened and, and whether the claim has merit based upon whether the city had a reasonable opportunity to repair the, the defect. In this case, again, most of these are pothole cases functionally.
Yeah. No, I love it. I, I think this, I don't know what we're gonna all decide to recommend to the council. I do know that I, that we owe a good discussion, a good bit of research, and a recommendation on all of these, in some form of timely manner.
And again, they're all fact-driven, you know, there's not, they're not identical in any way, so.
Just, yeah, so the three of us were on kind of notice, that, that's, that's the plan I have for us.
And just-
Isn't that fun at all?
Just so that you know-
Doesn't that thing fun?
James Bonzel and his committee heard a couple of these claims toward the end of last year. And I, I think frankly, they somewhat came to the law department because we picked up our phone, you know? Not that, I mean, I don't have much interest-
That could be a problem for us, then.
I don't have much interest in being a, you know, property and casualty insurance adjuster, but, you know, whatever we need to do to get the job done, you know?
Were you trying to make a point?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna, just say two items following that. So, we did review pretty extensively the one with, it's the G E O W of Wolfgang Schneider, and had some conclusion that came out of that. So, I'm not saying that that needs to come to the front or anything, but just saying that we reviewed it, we, we heard evident, like, Mr. Gary went and did some research that the committee had requested that he do. That's not really part of his job description, but he did it anyways, and it was appreciated at the time.
Detective, too?
And another thing I just wanted to note was that, I think, and I might be wrong, I feel like there's like a statute of limitations, like that if it's something, a certain date expires, that somebody can't come and then file an actual lawsuit. Is there a-
That's actually true. For property and personal injury, it's two years.
Okay, so this, so it's, that looks like the one, the first one here, the 321, 2018 date of loss, 327 filed, 2018 filed. I, I would just recommend that we try to get back to her before that date, just so that she retains all the options that she has.
I've had no recent contact with the first five claimants, okay? I've had some contact with Elena Costello, invited her to a meeting, she was sick, you know, et cetera. Ben Ranz, I've had some contact with, he's a law student at UC. Tracy Bro, or, I'm sorry, Kelly McCarter, I've had some contact with. Again, they're all different in terms of, you know, the, the claims. The other curious thing is that there's a provision in the Norwood codified ordinances that allows the auditor and the law director to settle claims up to 250 bucks, and that's been in place since 1976. So, you know, some of those claims theoretically could be resolved at the lower levels.
Are you suggesting that that be adjusted?
I, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just observing the-
What do you think about that?
-current status of the law.
You got a thought on that?
Well, you'd think that, you'd think that, yeah, I mean, 1976, a dollar was a dollar, and now it's like probably 30 cents.
A bit less than that.
Yeah, it's 250 bucks, you know?
Do you have a second point?
Yeah, and I just want to just reemphasize, I was gonna bring that ordinance up in the cloud that Mr. Gary did. So, yeah, it, it's there for the auditor and director of law together to settle and adjust any claims for damages against the city. I would rec, I definitely would recommend that we increase that. The auditor and director of law are both duly author, duly elected officials, competent people, and we're gonna start getting, in my opinion, we, it's just going to, we're gonna get bogged down in this committee, because each, I mean, just the, the amount of time that we spent on the previous claim that I had mentioned. You know, it was two different meetings of over an hour each on, well, maybe around an hour each, just on that one claim. And so, I would say at some point, we need a better process where basically the law department comes to council with a recommendation, "Look, this, we do believe that," or, or, sorry, actually, they don't have to come to council, sorry. actually, they don't have to come to council, sorry, they would be the ones that would just take care of it, and then report to council what kind of they took care of. And I think that's a better system overall, because it doesn't make it political in that sense. And if they, if the law, and if the director of law and the auditor choose not to go after one of those, they can still come, I guess, to this committee, and we can still process it. It doesn't take away our right to do that, but it allows some of these small things to kind of be resolved, if they feel like they can resolve them without, you know, if there's not much controversy.
I, for example, think that the Costello claim, the city had some notice, apparently, per my conversations with some people at Public Works. It didn't get, the, this is Wakefield, which is actually next to where Wolfgang Schneider's parents live. And Wakefield's a mess, I think. And the city had some time to repair it and didn't. And so those two claims may have some merit, rather than, you know, the ones where the city wasn't even on notice, that, you know, that there were problems until after the, after the loss. So, you know, the $208.01 damage to the, from the pothole to Ms. Costello's two tires, I think, and I know it's weird that it's two tires, but it is, might make sense.
Just some background on the way this works. Somebody says, hey, they'll call the mayor's office, or the law director, probably, they'll call the water department, say, hey, listen, this isn't fair, the city should pay for this, and whatever department it says, okay, you need to fill out a claim form. And that comes to the clerk of council, and then that comes to the Finance Committee, and that's how the process gets started. And it can be anything, it can be, you know, the water, it stains from, there was a lot of rust in my water, it ruined all my laundry, that was one. There were claims from fallen trees, there are a lot of pothole kinds of claims. There've been a lot of weird ones, torn uniforms that weren't over and above what was in the uniform lines. There have been a lot of different kinds of claims that have come forward, but that's how the process starts. Just wanted you to know that. And I'll also say, if you want to give authority to me and Jim to approve or deny claims, you've just picked the two people less likely, least likely to pay any claims. I just want you to know that. And if you're gonna do that, you need to actually put some money into the settlement of claims key, because there's zero.
Well, that just means it comes to you guys.
Yeah, that's the other factor.
It just means it comes to you guys.
It actually comes out of your budget now.
How they come mad.
But, right.
It actually comes out of the Law Department's budget. That's why we got rid of that.
Oh, is it that there's not a separate key line?
There used to be.
Is there an appeal process for that, if you deny one?
Yes, and that is in court.
Court of law, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is fine, because that's what we do, you know? And it, the claimant carries a burden of proof of, by the preponderance of the evidence to prove that they're entitled to the recovery. So, you know, but that's the way it's worked historically, put it that way.
So just hand everything over to Keith and Jim.
Well, but it could be, I guess, and it could be kind of the policy of this, of this committee or this council, I'm not advocating for this, I'm just saying that we could just say, you know what, we're not going to prove any pothole claims whatsoever, and if they want to then go to court, and go to court, then we'll just go to court for any of the ones that will go to court. I mean, I think that's essentially what happened when the city just had $0 back in the days. They would just say, nope, deny, deny, deny. So it's not that we have to approve any of these, it's just that, do we, I mean, I think there just has to be a decision based on, like, you know, fairness, based on, like, is approving some of these gonna then invite a whole bunch more? I guess it's really just, we're providing an option to these people that are filing claims so that they don't have to go to court, but not necessarily all of them will go to court. And so again, I'm just, and I'm not saying, it sounds heartless the way I said that, but I'm just, just wanting to make sure that, you know, letting you all know what has been taken into account in the past, and, you know, it, I don't know exactly what the policy will be, I'm really curious to hear kind of which direction we go with some of these, but just know that we don't have to approve any of them, even if it does, the evidence does make sense, don't have to approve them, because ultimately, it's their responsibility to go to court against the city if they feel that they are entitled to that, but this claims process just kind of provides an alternative to save all of us some time if we believe that might happen.
I like that.
And there's also the alternative to have the policy that, okay, the city may not be legally obligated to pay for this, but we think it's the right thing to do, so we are gonna.
Yeah, so even the other way, yeah.
So that's why it comes to you guys.
Yeah.
I like that, I think that's, I mean, that's a great point. A lot of that responsibility falls on the driver, I mean, I don't want to go, I mean, our streets are being, are being done, there's a lot of streets and roads being paved right now, and it's your responsibility to see them. I mean, I've just got a car, and it's really low, and if I run into a pothole, I'm not gonna blame somebody else, it's my fault, so.
Well, counsel can breed, and that's-
I personally like that.
Well, no, no, I was not-
That's a point that's actually supported in the law by a statute called comparative negligence.
Yeah.
That says that, that the, the claimant may have some responsibility, too, and if the claimant has more than half responsibility, then they recover nothing. If they have half responsibility, then they recover half their damages. If they have a quarter responsibility, they recover three-quarters of their damages.
Okay.
And Mr., and I just want to really clarify, I was not advocating for that, I wanted the committee to know what their options were on that. So I was not saying that we should have that position, but I just wanted you to know that the ball's in, the ball's in our court, if you will.
And all things being equal, I'd prefer, you know, not to have to drag city employees down to court, you know, to testify that, oh, this got reported on December the 10th, it happened on December the 9th, you know, that kind of thing. But again, I think alternative dispute resolution like this is a great idea.
Cool. I'll weigh up this discussion and kind of bring a few process changes to the committee next time, next time we call it. I don't want to kind of put everything yet.
No, no, yeah.
Let me ask you this. Are you urging that we increase that, that settlement amount, the authority for the settlement amount?
I think we should. I think it, and then, because, like, he just, the assistant law director just said that, you know, alternative dispute resolution methods are a preferred thing, well, that is just one more option than that-
Sure.
-to help resolve these earlier. So, yeah, I mean, I very much, I personally believe that it should be increased, and I think it'll provide for better government, honestly, for that option to be there if you all choose to exercise it. But you may not choose to exercise it.
Part two of the question, how much?
I'd be, I mean, I'd be comfortable at, I don't know.
I know I said that, and I don't want to recant, but, I mean, 250, that was, that was the-
That was in 1976.
So, but, you know, how much is a tire? So, I mean, I know I said that, but I'm not exactly sure that-
Sometimes it's a tire and a wheel, believe it or not.
A tire is, you know.
Can be, yeah.
A thousand dollars.
Having said that, some people have insurance that, you know, like, Wolfgang Schneider has-
I'm not making any recommendations at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, like, I'd be comfortable with $1,000, so making it that, and-
Okay.
And even 1,000, I don't know what you all think on that, too.
Oh, it would skinny this up to-
Well, if they choose to exercise, again, they still-
Of course.
Yeah. But, I mean, yeah, that's for me, I'd be comfortable with them having that ability, especially when, if the research has been done, he knows the research, and-
Yeah, I mean, $1,000 doesn't seem too bad, it doesn't seem like there's too many in each, I mean, you can't predict-
Discussion.
-what chaos is gonna happen, but, you know, I like that.
But again, the headlines are, the city isn't responsible for every dag on, you know, flat tire from a pothole. They're just not. You know, the potholes happen, they should be reported to Public Works in a systematic way, you know, Public Works should keep track of them in a systematic way and repair them. Like, for example, the one that happened on November the 9th, or December the 9th, got repaired as soon as it got found, you know, which is great, it's what's supposed to happen.
And, I was gonna say, Mayor Schneider, at his inauguration address, I mean, he hinted out, and I'll turn it right, I mean, well, I'll turn it back over to the chair, but he hinted that there's going to be a workflow management system, or work request management system, that that is a huge gap right now, because we don't know when these things were reported, and when they were fixed or not fixed, or what have you, so I'm looking forward to that, that's for sure.
Can I throw in? Are you opening a Pandora's box by putting an ordinance on, or changing that ordinance to 1,000, and making that public, we know? And is, are cities, we know we are, we are going to be doing more paving, we know that Wakefield is going to be paved this year, so there's a lot of paving that will be done over the next year. Can we wait until next year to change that to $1,000, until we get some, that system, that, that system in place, a good system where, you know, when they do come to the auditor or Law Department and say, this is what's going on, we can easily go back and say, well, look, here, right here, and go from there? I caution moving in the direction that you're potentially going at this exact time.
I have one more thing to add, too, and potential for corruption here, I don't, we, I keep using my own examples here, but I have been self-employed in Norwood for 25 years, and I've traveled these roads, and I've busted a few tires. And I have, you know, I'm playing my hand here, but I've, I've never paid more than $15 for a tire. I'd go get a tire for my truck for 15 bucks, and I'd install it myself, so there's already potential for corruption here. So, yeah, let's not go up, and I think we're good right now, so.
But we've all seen your truck.
I can tell you right now, I've put-
We've seen your truck, too.
All I'm saying is, is you can get a tire fixed for $250.
Well, I'll tell you this, my 12 years on council, I don't, I think there was one claim I ever voted to approve, and the mayor vetoed it, so.
Was he the actual mayor? Okay, okay, you were looking at the mayor, so I was like, oh, wow, that's what it would be, yeah.
But even some of these, even some of these at the, where they're at, $280 for this one, if, if they would have, if somebody would tell her, we can settle this right now for $250, how's that? She'd probably be the first person to say, let's move forward. There's quite a few here.
But there's nothing saying they can't do that, too, if it was 1,000. Again, and I'm fine either, I mean, I'm fine not raising, I'm not gonna, it is what it is, I was just trying to offer some options to let some, let this committee not get bogged down, even if we just spent an hour on each one of these. I mean, that is, that's a decent amount of time for very small-dollar things, when there's some million-dollar-type, you know, issues at the city that need to be addressed, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
I have a recommendation. Committee doesn't have a recommendation now, but I wanted to know where we're at, so I could try to let us think about that, and I wouldn't-
That's a good discussion.
Yeah, I want to try to do something about that in the next couple of committee meetings.
Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last four items on the agenda, we're pretty far, are there any closing?
Yeah, so just, if we did, so if we decided that we're going to send two ordinances to the council, or are we going to send three? And I would, and I would recommend if we do send two, or if we send three, that we vote on them in reverse order, that we vote on the bigger ones first, so that if those bigger ones don't pass, or if they don't have all three readings at that meeting, then we can then vote on the next one that can have, or the one that we can all pretty much agree on, get three readings and get that out the door that day, so.
A lot of sense.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, the first ordinance is the mayor's office, those three-
The three, yeah, there are three positions.
And-
Plus the adjusting safety service director salary.
Right, but that, the safety service executive assistant-
And the two administrators.
Administrative assistant positions, so it's those three.
Changing it to 5% the auto, the ability to negotiate.
We just said that wasn't the first ordinance.
I, well, right- This is the easiest one for me to get in my list of what to write, so, so that, okay, so it's, and change the 5% instead of 10, okay?
And if you ask me, the second one is everything else in that ordinance.
And the second one is, was option B, or?
I still think that we can get, and even if we meet one more time before the next council meeting, I still think that we can get it to a good median, and it sounds like the mayor was on board, too, with-
I do, too, John. I feel like we can put language in there that achieves what you want to achieve.
I have been in the minority before, I'm okay with that.
And Mr. Thompson had said the bottom number being 15 on the hourly rate.
And I highly agree with that.
Not 13, 20.
For, 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 part-time.
For those part-time.
Yeah, part-time, non-union.
And the FRP terms.
And the what?
Okay, so, I don't know why we would miss the two.
Because we're, because that's how, I guess, government kind of works, when you-
It's not, this is our, our ordinances, this is the ordinance that was, came up with, that was kind of, this is kind of what was brought to us as urgent, let's, let's get this, because this is what we need, cut, let it more urgent. So I don't believe, not that this is right or wrong, I just don't believe it's urgent. So that's my reasoning there, so.
But, John, it's not council's job to completely rubber stamp everything that gets presented to us, it's our job to look at it, to try to make adjustments and changes, and honestly, I like what was presented, I think that option B, like, enhances it, and now I think we're in a good spot where everybody's kind of in alignment, and honestly, I think we can get it out the door on the 14th.
I respect that, but no one's rubber stamping anything. That's not what, that's not what, no one's rubber stamping anything. So I just believe that these are two different ordinances, drawn up by two different people. To miss them would be two different-
Well, I think, I think like Eric talked about, maybe if we meet again before the 14th, is that what you're saying?
No, I wasn't, but-
That maybe we could get something that does work, that is flexible.
Put it together, and let's, let's let the chips fall.
So it sounds like, it sounds like there's gonna be three, we probably need to have some on the agenda. And so I'd recommend we do them in complete reverse order, then, so we do the B, the B number first, we vote on that to see how many readings we can get of that, then we vote on A, then we vote on, or, actually, I don't, then we vote on the one that's slimmed down, so that's-
You can also make changes to them during the meeting.
True, we can make, yeah, so the auditor said we can make changes during the meeting, and that is true.
That's where we hold the recess, you would go back and strike.
It depends on what it is you want to do. If you want to say, okay, this is swell, I'd love everything in here, except, I don't want these three positions, you can say, I would like to make a motion to cross out those three lines, that's easy. If it's anything more, if it gets more complicated than that, then you need to present it in writing, and either you, the member can bring it in, make copies of the amendment and bring it in, or we can make a recess, and I can try to do it, try to type it up, without destroying everything. So the first one I got, the second one is, this one, the second is, what was presented at the January 1st meeting is option B.
Yes.
But it's 5% instead of 10, and he raises to people currently in positions, do not go into effect until April 1st.
Yes.
And then we clean up the auditors thing, the assistant deputy auditors. And we want to raise the minimum for all the pays, the lows for, because that would be for the salaries, too, $15 an hour.
Yes, I suppose.
Because that actually makes more sense as a living wage, as opposed to somebody working 10 hours a week. So I think they would be above $15 an hour-
That's fine, that makes sense.
-for the salaried positions.
I mean, I think there's a treasure, there's like that Treasury clerk position, I don't know if that ends up, but it's, I think it's, I think it makes sense, because it's hard, it's pretty hard to find somebody that's-
Hold on to them.
Yeah, exactly, that's willing to stay, they'll, they might come for five months, exactly. So I think, I mean, the $15 an hour thing, I think it just makes logical sense to do it on all of the appointed positions.
And I just had a quick comment, so the third one, the way that that was, or the second one, the way that was structured, the reason that that might be good to leave it as such, is if you could find exactly the one, the positions that you thought were add-ons to the original ordinance, and I think we know, then you would just compare this list to this list, you could make a motion that says, this, 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 this is as described.
Okay.
This way, we would have two, still cleaner, and if you were to get garnish support for your feelings, then that motion, your motion would pass, and we would cross out the ones that you had a problem with.
Yes, sir.
So you're still heard, you know what I mean?
I got you.
But I think it's cleaner.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
And I think, and I make it, I have a feeling that it's probably gonna pass eventually.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so just two ordinances, okay? I will send out drafts.
Thanks.
In advance, so everybody can see them and tell me what I got wrong. I do want to caution, we're gonna send, there's stuff that's gonna be, Jim's gonna be emailing stuff out, you're gonna be emailing stuff out, I'm gonna be emailing stuff out, I want to caution you that the four of you cannot communicate with each other about the content of this meeting, about public policy by email or by text to talk about whether, you can't tell those two that you like this or don't like that, because that is gonna violate the Open Meetings Act. So if you want to have a discussion about this stuff, you gotta have it all together at a public meeting. Now, there are some, except if two of you get together and talk, that's fine, it's not a quorum of this committee, but you can't go to him and then go to him and then go to him. So that's the way it's, so I can send out comments, send them out, and so the chairman can tell me what I got wrong, but that's gonna be about it, okay? I just want to caution everybody against that because that's the last thing we need is a sunshine act lawsuit in January, at the beginning of your term.
So you're saying two of us can discuss what we want, what about, and then when a third person from this group comes in, that's not, that's not.
You can't talk about this stuff, exactly, that's, that's so good, right, that's exactly right, because you don't have a quorum. And that's one of the reasons we have four people on this committee in the Economic Development Committee, so two members can get together and talk about stuff, can sit down with the auditor and figure stuff out, sit down with Bill and the commissioner, figure